About the size of my cell phone, you get a hundred and forty-four hours on an MP3 code. The thing is, the technology is probably the theory was that the equipment to melt was too far behind. Well, the thing is, they talked about fiber optic back in the nineteen twenties.
Okay.
But they couldn't prove it. Because the manufacturing was too far behind.
Okay, folks, we'll bring the meeting to order in a second.
My allegiance to the flag, United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, everybody. Some meeting minutes to approve, and that will be our August eleventh, two thousand and fourteen. We're going to sketch a council meeting minutes. If there's any additions or corrections, I'll be looking for a motion to have both approved.
I will make that motion to approve them.
Motion on the floor by Donnie.
Yes, I second this.
Seconded by Matt. All those in favor, please signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, carried unanimously. Uh, we have the agenda this evening. Uh, I know Linda had something she wanted to add to the agenda. That would be a CD rule.
Yes.
And do you want to do that, uh, on the bottom?
We can do that, yes.
Okay. Anything else you need to add to the agenda? Do you folks want to get on the agenda, or are they on the agenda?
Yeah.
Okay. Uh, yeah, where do you want to put them? Should we put them right on top?
Wherever you want to put me.
Okay. But you can folks right on top. That way, if you don't want, stick her out for the rest of the meeting, you don't have to. And your name is, sir?
My name is John Motz.
John?
And I'm here with Michelle Campbell.
Okay. We have any additions or corrections? I will be looking for a motion to have, uh, the agenda approved.
I think motion to approve the agenda.
Motion on the floor by Matt.
I'll second that one.
Seconded by Donnie. All those in favor, please signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, carried unanimously. John and Michelle, what can we do for you this evening?
Um, we moved up here, it got a little bit of a problem that happened last Sunday with the first responders.
Last night?
Last Sunday.
Okay.
Last Sunday.
Um, a little bit background about myself. I have been a registered emergency medical technician since nineteen seventy-nine. Been an army medic since nineteen eighty. Um, spent two years military emergency room down in Fortsul, Oklahoma. I'm gonna be retiring from the military this year as a senior medical NCO. I've been to combat three times. I've ran my own first responder program through a voice code explorer program with the Fox four-three-four main support battalion out of Caddis Crow, Minnesota, Minnesota National Guard. Uh, when I first came up here, I probably should have sold myself better when I was invited to at least try to get voted on. But I got declined and told if I really wanted to go somewhere, I needed to move on. Well, last week ago this past Friday, Michelle was told by her doctor at Little Falls Orthopedics that she had a fractured right ankle.
Okay.
Sunday night, she ruptured a disc between L three and L four on her back. Requested ambulance to take her to the ER because she was in extreme pain. I went into my EMT mode, called the ambulance. It took three pages with the third request for the third page by the Gold Cross paramedics. First responders, when they did arrive to see him, only two showed up, and the one was a little malty. And I, it was dark by that point in time. It happened right around nine o'clock. Um, I thought, the embryer said Stacy, it might have been a different name, but the comment she made straight out was she's not obligated to respond, and she's got kids at home. And as somebody who's been in the business, I got out of active duty because my mom raised five of us kids without a dad because our dad died of a massive brain tumor when I was twelve years old. I took the EMT course while I was a senior in high school, and it's that class why our high school students today get to have college grades added to their high school diploma. All my class did is add the debate. When I tried to run that explorer program with the Minnesota National Guard, that's what got the approval that sixteen-year-olds can get approved for first responder training. I've responded to kids who bullied me in school, sometimes hours earlier, sometimes to fatal accidents. I stayed professional. No, I didn't get paid a dime. I could count less. I'd rather serve my community. It doesn't matter if I'm gonna be here two years, five years, ten years. I would love to be able to give my skills to my community. When it takes three pages, they say they got nineteen people, they're full up, and they won't respond to a page, I'm hoping it's not something political because...
Well, uh, first, first of all, let me just cut you off for a quick second. Um, thank you for your military service, um, to our country. And I'm sure everybody here kind of appreciate that, and, um, especially the city council. Secondly, um, our first responders, um, I know most of these folks fairly well. They are volunteers. They work extremely hard and they're extremely loyal to their job. If it took a few pages to, to get, you know, not everybody's always around at the end.
I understand it. I've been...
You know, and here's, here's the thing as far as the city goes in the first response, those, we don't manage them. They are a five oh one C three. They're a nonprofit organization. They blow their own fundraising. They take care of their own. They're all very highly trained individuals, and they're good people. So I'm not sure how this conflict started, but I don't know of anybody who would intentionally want to come into your home and start being rude with you. Uh, I don't know what the details are, um, you know, but that really is not a city or something we can do or deal with.
All I wanted to advise is there was a problem. I realize that they're an entity, and this has been a constant problem. They choose by popular vote.
I don't believe that. I, I'm sorry, sir, but I don't believe that for one.
That is what I've been told.
As, as far as, as far as responding to calls, where they go?
No, I'm saying when they select their membership, it's like...
Oh, yeah, I, I guess I'm not sure how this looks. I apologize, yeah.
But the thing is, the behavior was not that of a first responder that was occurred last Sunday. I did file a complaint with the state through the Emergency Medical Response Board, and I just wanted to be fair to let the city know.
Yeah, because, I, I mean, I, I apologize. I thought you were talking about, you know, when they go on to calls, it's popularity.
No, 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 but...
No, they respond.
But the thing is...
And I know they've, they've served, they've served, you know, dozens and dozens of people in our community every year.
And I realize that. You know, I'm not, I'm not here to dispute it. I'm like here to say, hey, there was a problem.
Good.
And trying to make you aware of it out of courtesy.
Sure.
Because we're all human beings. We all have good days, we all have bad days. I realize they're volunteers. I've been on the same boat myself. When I went, the three combat tours I did, the first combat tour, we were in Kosovo during the rioting. My squad of medics, I was the squad leader, we went and trained the Kamenisha Fire Department, the first responder skills, because they couldn't handle, they didn't know how to handle medicals. My last tour, I was emergency services coordinator for our clinic. The thing is, as an EMT, I needed the help because she would, had gone to bed,
Well, sure.
The two paramedics that showed up were just small, two petite female paramedics. We all felt let down. Because, like I said, the third page was on their request.
Our big, our big thing is, I, I mean, I, I know from a community standpoint, um, you know, we can't tell who's gonna show up, whether this person weighs five hundred pounds or, or two hundred pounds or, or fifty pounds. I don't know if that's one of the pre-records as far as getting on, on the department, uh, or on the squad, I should say. And, um, like I said, I know these folks are, are very dedicated, and, and there could be times, like I said, they're all volunteers. There could be times when not everybody is in the city at the exact same time.
Right, but here, here you got an EMT who's been a dedicated medic, even though he's had the door slammed in front of his face so many times.
I don't guarantee you're gonna be in the city for twenty years.
No, there isn't.
No, and, and that's...
But, but the thing is, I was just concerned with the attitude that's given, what had happened, and like I said, I just went out of cur, out of courtesy. Yes, I did make file agreements through...
And, and that's, that's probably the right way to go, because as far as the city council, like I said, they are a non-city organization. Um, so, you know, um, I'm not sure about, I, I can just tell you the past experiences that, that we've had as, as many people in this community with our first response team. I said, very good, very dedicated individuals to what they, to what they deserve.
The, the first time they came to house when Michelle had a massive asthma attack, they were great. It was just this last time, it was, it was night and day. And it was so night that had, I had experienced, and I had experienced stuff like that through a military career. We've had to relieve the medics that behaved the way that, that one female medic behaved, and it was, it's that bad. And I'm just saying it from my experience in the medical field. I mean...
Sure. No, I understand completely.
And, you know, I don't know what the motivation was behind it. I frankly don't care. My main thing is to make sure what happened doesn't happen again and doesn't hurt somebody else, because, yeah, it might just be...
Was there any, was there any additional, I guess, and I'm just asking this out of curiosity, but was there any additional harm that was created?
No, because basically the paramedics and myself are doing most of the work ourselves, and we're just doing the best we could of what we had, and...
Well, we have several first responders that are on our team that are actually in a back row, so, um, I guess I would like to maybe ask our police chief what he thinks of, uh...
Well, I can say eighteen years of awareness, fine uniform, and being a first responder, most of them eighteen. I've never stood in front and had somebody complain on a first responder before. Number two, Pierce has such a great response team, one of the most dedicated teams, one of the larger teams in Morrison County. And I just, as a chief of police, I have been on ma, many, many medicals and full CPR, full close by myself. And it is what it is, because everybody else has a life, everybody else has a job, everybody else has kids. And I think it's, Pierce should be, just like your fire department, unbelievably appreciative of what we have. And I don't know what happened that night, but I can say I've never, and I, I go to most of the medicals because I'm here during the day during the night, and I've never seen one of our first responder members being disrespectful to people that we're trying to help and relieve the pain and move them on to the next level of, of medical care, which is the hospital.
Right, but unfortunately, Sunday, it happened.
It happened.
So, which, you know, and like I said, all I'm trying to do is, for respect to you, Eric, as well as the city council, this is what happened. You, they had something go wrong, went awry. It's something that needs to be addressed, and...
But you also, you're talking from your level of medical care that you did of EMT. You also have to remember that these are first responders.
I understand that.
And the level of care that they can give is completely different than what you were used to giving. Again, thank you for your service. When you served, but there, the level of care that they're gonna give here is completely different than what you have done over on the, on the medical...
I, I understand.
Completely different.
But she was rude.
Unfortunately, on a Sunday, there wasn't even first responder level care. And, you know, one of the things I did on my, my third tour is I had to train eight semi-truck drivers to be our ambulance drivers, because we didn't have enough medics to run our ambulance and our clinic overseas. And matter of fact, I know there were one of the Pierce residents was, was on the deployment with me. But, you know, all I'm trying to do is just notify that there was a problem. It happens, even in the best teams, it happens.
Yeah, I mean, it's, um...
And, and I'm not, I mean, it's just...
From your perspective, I mean, it's, it's, it's nice to know that if you feel we have, uh, maybe some issues, some of our first responders could certainly take a look and, and go back and look at the run and, and, uh...
And learn lessons from it.
Sure, you bet.
You know, it's, it's all about learning experience.
That's a true...
I mean, like I said, you know, part of my frustration is I, I expect when I'm the patient to get the best care. I try to give the best care regardless who it is. If I have to stop in an accident, I, I don't have to have my medical gear with me. I'll do the best I can until help arrives. That's...
And that's kind of the way our first responders think too, you know, I mean, they try and...
It's been...
Normally will give the best care they possibly can to everybody.
It's, it's been ingrained in me for ever since sixteen years old, and I gladly do it. I wish my career hadn't gone the way that it did, so I could have done possibly a lot more good, but with the way it did, it is what it is, because politics sometimes plays ahead of our dreams.
But, miss, are you talking politics with us again, because that's like the third time you said...
No, I, I know. I'm just, I'm just talking about my experiences.
I just want to make sure it's only...
Yeah, because my main concern here is, you know, there was some behaviors at the call that should not have happened. And I think everybody was getting frustrated from what, from one experience after another, whatever it was, it was, you know, but what we saw should not have happened. It could have been handled better.
Why do you believe that it happened? Do you think that there's ulterior motives or because of a personality issue or anything of that nature? Did you ever have a run-in with the, with the responders in the past that made...
The, the only thing I can think of is the way I was, when I put my application in, how I was told if I really wanted to find a squad, I had to move on. And that kind of put a little armed red flag in my pack, and, and I was like, wait a minute, and I just kind of let it lie. Um, but, uh, and I realize volunteer squads, it doesn't always guarantee. I lived in a community from the cities that had one of the smallest volunteer fire departments. And those guys had a tendency to show up to calls drunk, and... Which was not a lot of fun when you're just Joe Citizen pulled out of a car accident that's fatal, because the guy that just got killed was buying drinks for the local fire department. And, and so, I mean, I really don't, you know, I realize I got my frustrations because I'm, the reason why I moved up here is a very frustrating situation in its own right. Um, but, you know, Sunday night, we needed help because it was very difficult for the two paramedics and myself to lift Michelle out of bed, uh, for the morning.
Well, you did have, you did have a couple of responders there as well.
The responders showed up after we started giving her up and moving her, because the third page went out. They waited, I don't know how long before, but by the time they showed up, we had already gotten Michelle out of bed and was slowly moving her to the ambulance gurney. And they met, they met us outside.
Well, thank you guys very much. We appreciate, you know, the communication, and, um, like I said, I'm, I'm sure we'll have, uh, our first responders will be looking into the situation and, and seeing if there's things they can do to improve.
Yeah.
Thanks again.
You bet.
Yep. Uh, next item on the agenda, we had a donation for two thousand fifteen Pierce area directory. We know how much that, that information was...
In the past, it's been a thousand dollars. Um, a commercial club, a presiding commercial club also donates a thousand dollars, so it's a natural thing. And if you're not familiar with their directory, I just took a little scan of my page.
It's really a nice tool, yeah.
It is, and it gives, uh, one thing to keep in mind from a city standpoint is us along with the, the commercial club being able to, to donate a thousand dollars to this gives the ability of our local businesses to advertise in this at a much more reasonable rate, um, to help them obviously grow their business within, within the city of Pierce, so.
How's that one that you go through and update? I think there's a fees in there and so forth.
Um, actually...
Or they hear somebody?
We will update the, the city of Pierce stuff, but actually Terry might have a little bit more info too. She does a lot of the administration with this directory as well. Um, so I think we'll be working closely with Terry and the Morrison County Record to get this up to date before the year two thousand and fifteen.
Is that, is, is cheering in the record, or how we got to see it?
To a s, to the, the local area.
Yep.
Yes, and then also it's obviously available, we, a new resident or a new renter, we pass these out, um, people coming in. And there is different locations where it's available.
I'll make a motion to, uh, approve a donation of a thousand dollars.
Motion on the floor from Donnie, she donated a thousand dollars. Get second.
I'd...
Seconded by Matt. All those in favor, please signify by stating aye. Aye, opposed, carried unanimously. Uh, we need to set our date for final levy approval. Scott, we're thinking December...
The first week of December, we have our council, so it'll be December eighth, December one.
In that, I'll go ahead and submit. Okay?
Can we make a motion and second on that or...
Uh, yeah, let's do it just, uh, for, for malady purposes.
Just to make sure. I'll make that motion then to set the levy on December eighth as the final levy.
Motion on the floor by Donnie.
Seconded.
And seconded by Matt. All those in favor, please signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, carried unanimously. We have the ambulance permit for nights in Columbus. I think that is an annual event that they hold at Pierce Ballroom every year.
Is that the Buffalo?
That's for the Buffalo, yeah, yeah. So we need to approve that, uh, application, uh, for the exempt permit. And that is, is the LG two twenty application for exempt permit. So we'll need a motion.
And make a motion to approve the, uh, application for permit. Yeah, I make seconded by a motion.
On the floor by Matt, seconded by Donnie. All those in favor, please signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, carried unanimously. Uh, next item Scott's been researching is, uh, the rule, uh, emergency response grant, and that is that AIGSTAR grant. And it's for emergency services personnel, things of that nature. Um, I know the first response team is also applying for that same type of grant, so we need to put together a better application than the first response team. Because it is...
It's a right out of the grant.
It's in.
No, it's, 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 it's really a need grant. If you look through some of the, uh, people in organization that's funded.
Yeah, some of the things need for the fire department and for that.
First response, it's, yeah, it's really a need deal. Um, uh, Brian is, uh, I think Scott's gonna talk with Brian, just find out, um, for sure what the fire department need might be, and then, um, he'll get that, uh, application in, and, uh, needs to be in by Friday, but I know there's probably several things we can use.
Correct, and one of the main reasons I wanted to bring this to the council is, um, being there is a number of people within our crowd and, and, um, the council that are part of either first response or fire department. Um, we're looking for ideas and also put together, um, a two thousand thirteen response equipment grant, or what they have applied for, what they've received, um, just to give you some ideas, but if there's, you know, we're looking for ideas from the, our police department, first response, fire department.
Yeah.
Um, things that would be a necessary need at the fire department, so.
Yeah.
Any ideas, please?
And police, as far as, Eric, I, I'm not sure what you guys need, um...
No, we'll let the, hopefully the first response team treats the fire department to the punch, and we call it good.
Do you want to figure out what we just had to...
Okay. So it's just kind of an FYI there, okay?
Yeah.
Uh, next we have the resolution zero eight two five one four. That's dash one two thousand and fifteen. That's our preliminary budget. And I believe we need to get that done this evening. Matt, do you have a copy of that resolution?
Yeah, I do.
Do you have one to, uh, just kind of go through that?
Yeah, I mean, I...
You don't have to read the whole resolution here.
Or just go and run it all down there. Yeah, I guess I can read it too. Um, resolution zero eight two five one four. Whereas the Pierce City Council has reviewed and discussed the two thousand and fifteen budget, and whereas upon a zero percent increase in the levy, no truth in taxation hearing at Pierce City Hall will be required. Now therefore be a resolved by the city council, the city of Pierce, county Morrison, Minnesota, to approve the proposed two thousand and fifteen preliminary levy certification as it is seen on the ensuing pages of this resolution.
Thanks, Matt. Got a frog oil tonight?
Can't talk.
Thanks. Um, our two thousand and fifteen preliminary budget right now is at, Scott, do you have the budget number? Is that on, is on the resolution?
I'm just saying, it is... Oh, it's not written on it, okay. Two hundred and eighty thousand, five hundred and fifteen.
I need a motion to have the resolution approved.
I'll make that motion.
Motion on the floor by Donnie.
Seconded.
Seconded by Matt. All those in favor, please signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, carried unanimously. Uh, we have the golf course dedicated fund transfer of nine hundred and thirty-seven dollars. Uh, Scott, what was that on the...
That was, um, the first fund transfer was for all the materials needed for...
To replace that patio door and all that stuff, you know?
This is labor in that trim then.
This is the labor in the front. Okay. And that basically is coming out of our two thousand and fifteen, or two thousand and fourteen, I'm sorry, dedicated twenty percent, twenty percent trend. So that will pass the end of the year. Yep. So we'll need a motion to have that...
I'll make that motion.
Motion on the floor by Donnie.
And seconded.
Seconded by Matt. All those in favor, please signify by stating aye.
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 Aye, opposed, carried unanimously. Right, folks, did a nice job on that.
Very nice.
That's really, you know, pretty good, yeah. Hi, Chris.
How are you?
Good, how about yourself?
Good.
Come on up, have a seat.
All right.
Hot seat, cheers. So we're better than our way down.
Here, man.
Chris Young is here, uh, from, uh, Premium Property LLC. This is going to be obtaining one of our, we're a lot. Chris, Scott, put this information together with the auto home. Do you have a chance to take a look at it or not? Okay, why don't you take whatever time you need there, Chris, make sure that developers' agreement, development's assessment agreement is, looks okay here.
We're live now.
Yeah.
Keeping in mind, council, this is the same, same development agreement, um, as with the U S L construction.
It's more developed.
Drafted with sanitation. I follow the same steps.
Okay.
Same guidelines. Um, due to Chris's, obviously he has a seasonal position, he's very hard to get a hold of. Um, so I've just been communicating with him over the phone to set these documents up. Now he's got a little more of an opportunity to look forward and look forward to this, so.
Okay. Yeah, I know Chris had stated to me that, uh, we've been talking about it as well, is that you maybe like to try and get some of the dirt work done and things of that nature, and maybe the concrete slab, and the way it sounded, probably the concrete in, uh, this, uh, fall yet, that maybe worked on the building this winter.
So just hire a local contractor for...
Yeah, it's kind of the way it sounded, just gonna get some of the...
I guess the biggest thing that was, uh, back here, um, just that you have a year to...
Finish your project?
Yeah.
Yeah, that could be a problem.
I think it's a year to start, though, isn't it?
My understanding was a year to start, then a year to finish.
So there's two.
As long as he breaks, but as we spoke, he wants a break round as well, so. And then, um, that you may not sell transfer motion of property for five years.
So five-year retention agreement.
Correct. That's something like that would happen, that, that you, all the assessments, that you gave the assessments of ten, ten thousand, six hundred and twenty-five.
Sure.
Yeah.
Okay with you, Chris, straightforward, huh?
Okay.
It's okay with Chris, and we're in the council approval, and, uh, the approval of the development agreement, quick claim deed, uh, be the next thing we're gonna have to go through to go for, uh, uh, premium properties LLC. I guess a quick claim deed, we don't have to approve that, so, uh, the motion signatures on it, but it would be a transfer of, of that lot.
You want to go for it, yeah.
Yeah.
I'll make the motion then to, uh, for the developer's agreement for, that's on premium, uh, premium property LLC.
Premium property, so we'll see. Uh, motion on the floor by Donnie.
And seconded.
And seconded by Matt. All those in favor, please signify by stating aye.
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 Aye, opposed, carried unanimously. Congratulations, Chris.
Almost your problem.
You know, just about to ground over a brand-new bouncing baby lot.
We appreciate it, thank you very much.
Appreciate you.
We need to stay after and then we'll get things done.
Uh, next item is our CD renewal, what do you got, Linda?
I renewed a general fund CD at F and A at point nine percent for ninety-two thousand seven hundred thirty-five and fifty-three cents. I called Unity Bank for the same CD and mail, but only with one five.
Okay.
Is that CD number?
It is two nine five three one.
That was ninety-two thousand seven hundred thirty-five, fifty-three cents. Okay. We need a motion to approve the CD transfer.
I'd make a motion to approve the, uh, CD renewal. And I will second that.
Motion made by Matt, seconded by Donnie, all those in favor, please signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, carried unanimously. Thanks, you guys. Um, Chief, did you have anything?
I do, my monthly reports, I got called off last night.
Okay.
Last meeting I got called off, so I couldn't do my monthly report, I gave it to, it was all in your box from the other last week. There's nothing great, I mean, it's the same, same thing every month really right now, you know, what school's gonna be different with school starting. October Fest yesterday went very well, um, if you see in the record, I sent Terry a summer safety for the kids and the parents, just for something for the kids back to school, just courtesy, and just to watch for, so kids know what to do to be safe back to school. Um, I sent on my part-time officer's alter qualification with the rifle from the squad car, I carry my own personal rifle, but I'm gonna have some difficulties with the barrel, and I've been told to get rid of it, cause it's, it's just not doing what it should, so I'm gonna start that research made with Tobian Lake reference to, to the cost and bring it to a council probably in the next month or two once.
Okay.
Know what the cost is gonna be.
The caliber D is normally.
Two twenty-three.
Okay.
And it's a, it's an older, it's almost an antique, but it's just something that, a lot of upgrades, stuff, so the part-time are taken.
Kind of about standard issue law enforcement.
It is, yeah. And then, can I go back to our conversation before?
Certainly.
It's just something he kept stating, and I've attended these meetings with the first responders, that he was told to go elsewhere. I can state that in our meetings, at first responders, that that conversation was never there. And I think it's unfair for him to say that, and I just wanted that noted.
Well, and I just hope there isn't just some sour grapes involved for not being able to get on a team at the, the, you know.
Right, I'm not even sure if our members know who he is, so it's for him to make that comment, well, probably, I think it's unfair, it's false. And again, we're lucky to have the fire department that I work with hand in hand, first responders, to have what we have dedicated to City of Pierce, that's above a lot of other communities in my book, so.
Yeah, we, uh, I volunteer, uh, folks that we have here in, in our city and our community, uh, we're extremely fortunate to have. Um, yeah, like I said, if there was anything that didn't go right on the first, on that call, I'm sure our first response team will talk about that. And iron that out, so.
Other than that, that's all I have from my monthly report. Thank you.
You're welcome. Uh, anybody else have anything?
Yeah, nobody else speak, I might be.
Go ahead, Scott.
Um, as you may see, some of you have your tablets, those are available to you, um, so. At this point, if you could just take the boxes, take everything, leave it as whole, um, start getting familiar with it, and, you know, get, kinda get it running, plug it up to the, you know, get it with the keyboard and things like that, please keep the boxes and everything together. Um, as council members and treasurer and, and, and things like that, we will leave it up to you to have full responsibility on those boxes. Um, if things change in the future, obviously, then we expect them to be returned. Um, but there's information in the boxes, things like that, obviously, if you need to learn how to program things and stuff like that, but, you know, in the next meeting or two, um, I will try to have more things sent to it, you know, we can, Donnie mentioned, you know, if you can put the minutes from two thousand thirteen as fourteen available on there, so he can at least look back on certain, certain.
I make a handy, yeah.
Um, so, but I, I think for the, you know, by the next council meeting, if you can just get familiar with it, and then we'll start moving forward and sending the documents directly to them and just that saving on paper.
The next meeting will have papers, so I would.
Yeah, I think the next meeting will still have papers. Um, other than that, um, there's a number of things that Nick and I have been working on, uh, one of them is the grant that you're gonna see in front of you that we talked about earlier and that Linda's been working on with first response, um, obviously that is a very more simple one, but there's something else, two that we've been working on. Just to give you a little bit of info, it's the Green Step City, and there's a number of things that, um, will definitely have an impact on our city, we can jump on board with that, so Nick and I are looking into that. Um, also, I think, and I've heard a number of remarks about how October Fest went and things like that. Um, I think my opinion to the council members, um, Bob, Dan, Zach, and Eric, along with his part-timers, put a lot of time in and, and dedicated their whole Sunday to this stuff, and, and I think it's important to recognize that.
I agree.
Thank them.
I know these guys, uh, everything went smooth, it seems like every year goes smooth, these guys just seem like they got their talent to kind of a science, and, uh, yeah, I know they put in a ton of time to make sure this all goes off without a hitch, and, I mean, I was around for, for a whole day yesterday, and it just seemed to me like everything went really, really well.
Everything, yeah, we had very good remarks. And even one thing too, uh, on regards to Bob, there was a speck of candy on the street this morning, so, who was the Bob for that?
He was carrying around a big bag though.
I know that, uh, Daniel had everything cleaned up, uh, pretty promptly, it was the way it's out, so, yeah, I know it's a lot of work, uh, for those individuals, and it is greatly appreciated.
I think the city should be proud of their, their employees.
We are.
Mm-hmm.
We're very proud of our employees.
That's all I have, so.
Thanks, Scott, anybody else have anything? Looking for a motion to adjourn.
And make motion to adjourn. I'll second that.
On the floor by Matt, this I can buy Donnie, all those in favor, please, I can buy by stating aye.
Aye. Aye.
That's his one.
Thank you very much, everybody.